Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk. We're gonna, we're gonna do the flags loop, we're gonna do the wrestlers and stuff, so if we don't get him, it's left that we let everybody out and they're not sure, that'd be okay. Alright, I'm sure he'll be okay with that. Good. Everybody ready? Everyone please stand for the flag.
The United States Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and each other.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting, today's Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, and the time is 7:02. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 8th, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall bulletin board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly will be joining us via phone. Commissioner Kelly, are you in? Okay, I think we don't have Commissioner Kelly yet. Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Petrakko? Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
Okay, all present mayors except Commissioner Kelly will be joining us via phone soon.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have regular meeting minutes for February 21st, 2023. Any emotion, please move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Petrakko? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Communications?
Yes, Mayor. The Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold raffles on Sunday, April 23, 2023, at 44 Park Avenue between the hours of 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Any emotion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
We do have a proclamation on the agenda where Commissioner Kelly presented. We'll just have it into the record. Let's go to reports.
Mayor, so Commissioner Kelly is having trouble with the access code for the dial-in.
Tell him directly.
Okay, we'll do that. Yeah, I have this number. Try that one. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, you have joined the meeting now. Commissioner Kelly is now on via phone.
Welcome, Commissioner. Let's go to reports. Mr. Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of February.
Commissioner Petrakko?
A report for public safety, thank you.
Let's move around the agenda a little bit. I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Tucci, he has some resolutions to read.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, tonight is one of those auspicious occasions. We typically don't get crowds this large, or, or this, this pleasant, and people that wanna come here and actually listen to us. But this evening is a little bit different, and before I read this resolution, and we honor this Nutley Junior Raider Wrestling Team, I think it's very important to note that leadership, no matter where it is, alright, is so vital and so important, alright? And it's, it's the key to success. With this program, we have outstanding leadership, and I will be noting them as part of this resolution. But even before I get to the resolution, I just want everyone to know the amount of time and dedication and commitment that goes into this by the leadership. Now naturally, they set the tone for everyone else, and that's why this group is so successful, and that's why we're so proud of you. So, having said that, I will read the resolution. Whereas the Nutley Junior Raider Wrestling Team has enjoyed an outstanding season, posting a league record of 11 wins and no losses, enhancing the team to a two-year record of 21 wins and no losses. Whereas the members of the Junior Raider Wrestling Team are Michael Perna, Frankie Westner, Bo Sljowski, Luke Finkelstein, Jack Finkelstein, Severio Marinelli, Grayson McCann, Evan Blanchard, Kevin Gallagher, A.J. Maiden, Anthony Bernardesco, Aiden Rotbaum, Trace Castellanos, Kristen Crespo, Valen Delaney, Riley Garofalo, Sam Malanga, Eliza Perez, Evan Siborowski, Joaquin Tenorio, Max Tripoli, and Nolan Brewer, and whereas head coach, now this is where the leadership comes in. Michael Blanchard, along with his assistant coaches Derrick Shell, Kevin Gallagher, Antonio Maiden, Ed Delaney, Dennis Tenorio, Sean Tripoli, have worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes, and if you follow them on Facebook, you know that's absolutely true. Whereas the members of the Junior Raiding Wrestling Team were the Northeast Division Champions and Twin County Dual Team Champions, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Junior Raider Wrestling Team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I so proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
I will add to Commissioner Tucci's comments. You know, I, I want as coaches, you know, I, I thank you for your willingness to spend the kind of time that you do to shape the lives of, of these young people. When you think about the society that we live in today, all the challenges around the world, the world that they're gonna live in is gonna be, require leadership. It's gonna require a set of good core values, you know, that I think Nutley is very well-known for in raising those in our children. And I congratulate you on your willingness to be part of the process that secures a future generation, the way you're doing. For all of you, you know, wrestlers and, and others alike, right, you're part of something now that you understand the nature of teamwork. You understand the nature of what, what it means to excel and to go after a goal and to achieve it. I encourage you to get used to that feeling and fight for it all the time. I gladly vote aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. First, I would like to apologize that I'm not able to be there in person, I came down with a cold reason, but we want to apologize. But if you want to congratulate each and every one of you, one of the things that I always challenge everyone who comes forward after achieving such success is that the hard work begins now. I want to challenge you guys, come back next year and be champions again. It's, it's great that you're champions now, but there's always room to improve, there's always ways to get better, and I'm, I'm certain that with the foundation that you have, that your coaches have laid down for you, that you're all gonna get better, and the sky's the limit for you guys. Congratulations, so well deserved.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to congratulate everyone here, the parents, the dedication from the coaches, and mostly the kids. And I have a kind of funny story I told years ago up here, I don't know if the commissioners and the mayor will remember this. But back when my kids were in school, Little Al, I don't know if it was ninth grade or eighth grade, there was a hole for the wrestling, and my, my kids weren't wrestlers at all. But Little Al was a pretty tough kid. So he comes home and he says to me, you know, Dad, you know, they want me to wrestle, what do you think? I said, well, you think you're a pretty tough kid, well, give it a shot. But he didn't do it in the minor programs or anything like that. So I want to tell you guys, my son, Little Al, he knows what every gym ceiling looks like in Essex County, because he got pinned all the time. But he worked hard, and that's what I hope all of you youngsters do, is really work hard, because lightning struck for him. We were in Livingston at his last match, and he's 28 years old now, and somehow, some way, he pinned the kid. And everybody from Nutley went crazy. I did get accused of giving a lot of roast beef sandwiches to that kid from Petrakko's belly. The friendship he made and how the kids went crazy for him when he finally, you know, got his first win, and then he never wrestled again, he stuck to baseball. But all the friendships that you guys have right now, you're gonna have for the rest of your life and the memories. So congratulate to you, congratulate to the parents and the coaches most of all. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I, I think I've already said a, a bunch, but I do also want to thank the parents, alright, because being the father of four children, I know what it takes to take these kids around, to dedicate yourselves, to bringing them there, to keeping them in the right frame of mind, keeping them focused, and making them the champions that they are. I very proudly, again, yes.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, two undefeated seasons in a row, you guys should be congratulated. Your parents should be commended for their hard work in getting you where you have to go, and of course, the coaches. You know, wrestling is a unique sport, right? It's not only a team sport, it's one-on-one, you and the other guy on the mat. And you don't get that kind of, in any other sport, where it's just a team sport, but also one-on-one. So all of you should be commended for your efforts, and I proudly vote aye. Thank you. Mayor, can we have Coach Blanchard up for a few words?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for having us here tonight. We appreciate your support. Very grateful for the support we have in town. Of course, Commissioner Tucci supports us every day, and even Superintendent Mayo as well. We have Coach DiPiano here from the high school, and he supports us a great deal as well. We're very fortunate. When you wrestle, the whole family's involved, and we have a very good atmosphere in our program. If 95 is written down, we're hoping to grow to more. We're hoping to encourage more young ladies to join wrestling as well. We only have one this year. For us to go undefeated the last two seasons is really kind of an unnatural thing. As a team, you experience adversity. Had that. Fortunate for it. A lot of it has to do with the hard work of our young people. They're really quite remarkable. Last year, we were in a different league. It was not nearly as tough as the league we're in this year. We took on that challenge. There's 52 other towns in our league, 20 of them wrestle in the dual tournaments and dual league. We went to the end of the year tournament 9-0 and had to face. Only beat by 10 points. They really tested us across the occasion. We have kids from third grade to our team all the way up to eighth grade. It's really nice and special about our program is that they all belong, whether they're third grade or eighth grade, they all kind of find a way. They have common bonds and it's special. What's building in Nutley is hopefully gonna transfer to the high school, and our goal is always to send as many kids as possible from eighth grade to Nutley High School. This year, we'll have eight. They leave a big void for us, but also leave a space for new people to come in and take their spots and hopefully do some great things as well. I'm also very grateful to our coaches. They give up a lot of their time and energy to be with us, and we're very fortunate to have the help that we have. I think to date, we have about 18 coaches in our program, which we never really had before. So a lot of hands, many hands make light work. Again, thank you so much for having us here. I have a special booklet for you guys. You can take a look at it. There's no test on it or anything like that, but it's basically all the results of the year. Coach Bruno over here, knowing for a long time, actually, when he was here in high school, one of the regions, one, right after one of mine. Know him for a long time, he's a junior raider this time. We'll get him in soon, and he'll be coaching with us as well. So thank you again. We appreciate the support. Let's give our parents as well, and our kids.
Come up for a picture?
Yes, please.
Alright.
And, and while we're coming up, I know Coach Blanchard recognized Coach DiPiano from the high school. We, we also have some extra special guests here this evening from the Board of Education. We have trustee Charlie Kazinsky and trustee Joe Bataglia in the back, looking at their future prospects. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you. Come on up for a picture, folks.
Any coaches in the audience, if you coach with us, come up. Silzenowski, get up here. Marinelli, get up here. Come on, Marinelli, get up here.
And while we're lining up, we also have trustee Tom DeLeah from the Board of Ed here. Tom, raise your hand so they can see you. Thanks for being here. Alright, we have one more wrestler to honor, so guys, take a seat for a couple seconds, and then we'll get you out of here.
Like herding cats.
I know, yeah.
And to, to continue along the same thread, you know, we, we always, we always hear each other speaking about how unique Nutley is, how positive we are, what good things we do here, how we're always on the cutting edge, or at least try very hard to be. If we're not number one, we're really close. Well, we also have some local trailblazers, alright? And this, this next young lady was, I believe, the first lady wrestler that we ever had that sustained an entire season. We may have had one before, didn't last very long, give her a lot of credit for even trying. But this young lady not only wrestled with the boys, alright, she was outstanding. She's courageous, she's proud. She comes from an outstanding family, the Costa family, that are deep-rooted in this town and are contributors. She's just a wonderful young lady, and to continue on with this celebration this evening, I'm gonna present this resolution. Whereas Mariah Costa, the daughter of Tim and Michelle Costa, is a senior at Nutley High School. And whereas Mariah participated in the Nutley Junior Wrestling Program, where she demonstrated sportsmanship, talent, and determination during the 2016, 2017, and 2018 wrestling seasons, and placed fifth in the county in 2018. And whereas Mariah was a female wrestler who helped pave the way for future female wrestlers in the Nutley Junior Wrestling Program. And whereas Mariah recently finished her four-year high school career, where she competed against boys and girls in her weight class, and amassed 55 total wins, and whereas Mariah finished fourth in the NJSIAA state tournament in 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate Mariah Costa for her exceptional efforts and accomplishments. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made part of the permanent record of the Township of Nutley. I move this resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Commissioner Kelly, can you hear?
Oh, yeah, I can hear.
Yeah, your vote, please?
Yeah, well, before I, I'd just like to say that as, as someone who comes from a family with, with five sisters, it, it always gets me going when I, when I hear about women trailblazers. Women play such an important role in my life, and have and will always play an important role in my life, just because I saw many important. Women are leaders in my family, women, relatives, women in my life. Seeing a woman's safety initiative and become a trailblazer, it, it's, it's something very incredible, and it's incredible that it's right here in Nutley. And I'm, I'm glad I'm able to have a front row seat, the, the history being made. I want to say congratulations, and I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I vote aye as well, and I might add a comment as well. Maria, never lose your personal conviction and strength in your own belief as to what you can accomplish. My daughter has excelled. She's both been able to break through the, what they call the glass ceiling, because of that internal strength. And I hope you never lose it, and I hope you actually share it and make it contagious with others, and I look forward to a very bright future for you. Mom and Dad, congratulations. I vote aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, thank you. Mariah, my hat's off to you. God bless you. It's unbelievable. You come from a great family. I can remember the day that you were born when I opened up the store a long time ago, but it's really great to see, you know, a, a woman of your stature and to come in fifth in the county is unbelievable, but you have great genes, and I'm sure you're gonna move way, way forward in life. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, one last comment. Mariah, you're not the biggest female wrestler we've ever seen. You're not the bulkiest female wrestler we've ever seen, but you are absolutely the toughest female wrestler we've ever seen. I vote yes.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A pioneer in our midst. Congratulations, Mariah. Congratulations, Michelle and Tammy. Your accomplishments over a four-year career are unbelievable. The obstacles that you had to overcome at the very beginning, and to get through those four years, and to place in the county and the state tournament is unbelievable. Congratulations. Proudly vote aye. Please come up for a photo? We're gonna take a couple-minute break, so if you guys like to go home, eat dinner, you don't have to be bored with the rest of our meeting. Clerk, I'm gonna turn it over to bills. Just go, alright?
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can you read the bill list, please?
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for March 21st, 2023, Public Affairs, $95,593.61. Revenue and Finance, $8,654.49, I'm, I'm sorry, $654,049.62. Public Safety, $153,742.94. Public Works, $89,870.57. Parks and Public Property, $97,188.80. Water Utility, $429,931.30. Water Utility, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. Payroll for Friday, March third, two thousand and twenty-three, regular payroll, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Overtime payroll total, forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Toll payroll, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. For a grand total of ten million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli. That's all for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach a microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioner on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Any announcements? Good mayor.
Good mayor.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, as we're aware, March is Women's History Month. We have our ongoing channel series going on. We have the Women's Palate Battle going around starting at six thirty tonight. And next week on the game we're having with the Women's Networking Group meeting three at the Comedy Store. We have our business affairs department for more information on that.
Commissioner Kelly, move on to your resolution.
All right, I have pulled up. This is a resolution recognizing the month of March as multiple myeloma awareness month. Whereas multiple myeloma is a type of cancer that begins in plasma cells, white blood cells, that are important to the healthy immune system. Over time, myeloma cells collect in the bone marrow, forming tumors in many of the body's bones. And whereas, while the causes of multiple myeloma are not fully understood, it's more common in older people, especially men, than African Americans. Some common symptoms include bone pain, weakness, or fatigue, weight loss, frequent infections, and frequent urination. Men are one point five times more likely to develop multiple myeloma than women. Whereas the National Cancer Institute's surveillance epidemiology and end result steer program estimates that more than thirty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy people living in the United States are diagnosed with multiple myeloma in two thousand and twenty-two and that twelve thousand, six hundred and forty died of the disease. Whereas in two thousand and twelve, multiple myeloma incidence in the United States set a twenty-one thousand new cases. By two thousand and twenty-five, that number is projected to grow to thirty-seven thousand. Whereas this disease is most frequently diagnosed in people between sixty-five and seventy years old. Now therefore be resolved with the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. You hereby recognize March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month and urge all citizens in Nutley to support efforts and activities to bring awareness and education to finding a cure for multiple myeloma during the month of March and throughout the year. So move.
Commissioner Kelly?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Appraisal Systems, Inc., two sixty-six Harrison Road, Suite three oh two, Glen Rock, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to provisions of NJ SA nineteen forty-four A, twenty dot four, twenty dot five, as appropriate, to provide revaluation services of all real property within the municipality for the year two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. A change order is necessary in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Funds are available in account C oh one, nine oh five, nine oh one, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer said. Certification attached this resolution now there for be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. A change order number one in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars be and is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The treasurer be is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents for the accounts listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes, I have resolution seventy-six dash twenty-three. I'm going to move it as written. This is a hold harmless agreement with at one twenty-three Prospect Street. The fire department's going to be training there. So I'll move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Well done, Commissioner. I.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas NJ SA eight nine dash forty-one requires Emergency Management Council reform to coordinate all disaster control activities on behalf of the Township of Nutley County of Essex. Essex now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that William Cassidy be appointed to serve a three-year term of emergency management coordinator on behalf of the Township of Nutley, starting January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two through January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Before I move it, we couldn't have a finer person heading that department. I proudly move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. Twenty-seven Pauline Drive, men's volleyball in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the year two thousand and twenty-three. And folks at twenty-three enclosure for recreation volleyball in the amount of fifty dollars for the same year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Thank you, Commissioner.
All I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Louis Pastina, employee of the Department of Public Works, be granted unpaid leave of absence effective March first, two thousand and twenty-three through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
This is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, resolution number eighty-one dash twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the appointment of DMR Architects as consulting professional planner to the Township of Nutley for redevelopment project within the township. I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization. John H. Walker Middle School PTO, license number twenty-three, twenty-three, on-premise merchandise raffle. License number twenty-six, twenty-three, on-premise fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Friday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Nutley Velvet Columbus Day Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee, license number twenty-four, twenty-three, on-premise merchandise raffle, license number twenty-five, twenty-three, on-premise fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the information licenses are hereby approved and said and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach a microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All regards, I'm sorry, all remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, forty-eight North Road. I was just here, I am here, I should say, as a follow-up from a few weeks ago when we presented information about the smart meters. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to explore that story or, you know, have you made any progress, in other words?
So, Mrs. Rubino, we contacted PSENG, besides reading all the information that was presented to us. We contacted PSENG. They're going to have a representative come to a future meeting. And we'll make that announcement that they'll be here. So you come and ask questions of them directly.
I have another printout. I only have one this time.
Also on that point, I heard the information for our health professionals and they're putting together a memo on that topic.
Okay, well, that's good that you're doing something about it. This you can share. I didn't have time to make a copy for each of you. And the other thing I was concerned about, I asked at the other meeting as well about the flood situation and you said there would be information shortly.
We're still working on that draft, yes.
Okay.
But it is, we're getting there. Thank you, Mrs. Rubino. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Mr. Bruno, do we have a need for executive tonight?
On.
We're going to be discussing contracts.
That's it.
Potential litigation.
Property acquisition, maybe. Madam Clerk?
Will there be personnel as well?
And personnel, the whole thing.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I need a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the public body is of the opinion as such circumstances exist. Whereas Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into executive session to discuss contract negotiations, acquisition of property, potential litigation and personnel. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I need a, we won't be conducting any further business, so.
Motion to adjourn. So move. Second.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The time is seven forty-four.
Thank you, everybody. Members of Board Ed?